We'll call this meeting of the Jefferson City Council to order, we'll call please.
Alderman Tully.
Here.
Fire?
Here.
Niles?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Microphone up in the top.
Here.
Don?
Here.
Public participation, wishing to address the council, we do so, we ask that you please stand and state your name and and address and reason for appearing. Seeing no one, move on to number three, a discussion on the 2020 Halloween dates and times. It's been proposed that we have the traditional trick or treating times from the hours of three to six on October 31st. Correct Chief? Anyone have any questions or comments about that? Okay, we'll see you on October 23- 31st, excuse me. Next, proclamation for the Jefferson Chamber of Commerce in recognition of Chamber of Commerce. City of Jefferson Chamber of Commerce proclamation, whereas the Jefferson Chamber of Commerce has been serving the Jefferson area since 1967. And whereas the Chamber provides a wide variety of services to their members, including advocacy and economic development. And whereas the Chamber promotes tourism and events, and whereas the Chamber works to solve critical economic challenges, including labor shortage and encourages entrepreneurship. And whereas the Chamber is a critical partner and problem solver with the unique ability to work with stakeholders from both the private and public. And whereas the Chamber does not owe the recognition and credit they deserve for making Jefferson area, the Jefferson area, a better place to live, work, play, and visit. Now therefore, I Dale Offerman, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Jefferson Chamber of Commerce Month. Throughout the Jefferson area, and I commend this observance to all of our citizens. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto sent my hand and caused the great seal of the City of Jefferson to be a fixed. Done at the City of Jefferson, this 15th day of September 2020. Next, we'll move on to, and first of all, thank you Jim, Penel. Thank you. For your efforts personally and the Chamber's efforts collectively, and working partnership with us, it's really been a joy to work together with you guys and promote businesses in Jefferson. Did you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you.
Okay. She's a woman of few words. Alright, thank you guys for coming tonight, we appreciate it. Next, the City of Jefferson proclamation for the National Night Out 2020. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on October 6th, 2020, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 37th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Jefferson to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Jefferson citizens play a vital role in assisting the City of Jefferson Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of Jefferson, and in supporting National Night Out 2020 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the City of Jefferson be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of Jefferson. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, for I and we, the City of Jefferson, Mayor Dale Offerman, and the City of Jefferson Honorable Council, County Council, do hereby call upon all citizens of the City of Jefferson to join the City of Jefferson Police Department, the National Association of Town Watch, of which we are a member, in supporting the 37th Annual National Night Out on October 6th, 2020. Further, let it be resolved that I, the City of Jefferson, Mayor Dale Offerman, and the Honorable City of Jefferson County Council do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 6th, 2020, as National Night Out in the City of Jefferson. Chief, thank you very much for bringing this great event to Jefferson, and we appreciate everything that you and your officers do and serve.
Thank you so much for the support, the great community, we've got a lot of great people here, and we, what's nice is the citizens police with us. That's what makes a really strong community, we've got so many great people working, living here, man. I'm very blessed to be here, my staff was to be here, we're such a great city. We have great cooperation, and this year it's gonna be all that for Jefferson County Sheriff's Park. So for all you, please take time and come out that night, and it's good, be family friendly, we're gonna highlight all the the things that we do, the services we have, we'll be out there with the drone, and hopefully we're gonna have some fireworks over there, so if you can make it out there, please come on. Thank you, man.
Good, thank you very much Chief, and we look forward to seeing all the citizens out on Tuesday, October 6th. We'll be sure we keep our council meeting agreed that night. Next, we'll have a presentation on Jefferson Golf Course Development. And we'll welcome our guests here.
Yeah, I'm, uh, my name is Nicole Miller, and I've done here before with Equway Development. Um, I have a printout here, and we have our team here, so do you want to quick introduce yourselves?
Uh, I'm Bill Ryan, I'm an architectural design consultant for the Architectural and Environmental Project.
Uh, Brad Nutter, with General Engineering, Civil Engineering Project.
Uh, Michelle, with this with Equway Development, owner and president.
And Jim needs no introduction, right? So, um, thank you for the opportunity to come here, um, there's been lots of us working diligently, um, through the district changes, and thank you for that, um, as well. So, you've seen a lot of this before, we have an updated site concept, um, that we'll get to in a bit, so I would just invite if you have questions, um, throughout, just go ahead and jump in, I'll go through and review these things. Um, well, Equway Development, we are Equway Development, uh, we are building the best western in town, the BP Station, so um, we've really enjoyed our time here in Jefferson, and I really look forward to this project. So, why Jefferson Wisconsin for senior housing, um, great location, right, um, six miles south of, of 94, uh, two business parks, um, in Jefferson, great school systems here, um, and the big thing is the growing employment opportunities, so continuing to draw those young families in, um, really create the need for, um, it really creates generational community, so, and that need for senior housing. Um, we have done feasibility studies, so keeping the 55 plus, um, age community members in the community where they've lived, um, really important, um, I think we can agree. So the project scope, um, so really we have three different phases happening here, first one is the senior housing building. Um, that is a 77, that will be a 77 unit building, um, a mix of independent plus, so what that means, there's just senior housing in general, there's strictly independent, right, no carriage are provided, no services are provided. Um, independent plus, everybody will have a pundit, everybody will be getting some nursing services. Um, and then assisted living with a small 14 unit memory care building, um, and that's really, there, there is a lot of memory care here, as we all know, um, but that continuum of care, um, is really important for the residents, it's a hard time to, to have to move buildings if the, the need should come. Um, common space, um, will include a community room, private dining, pub, uh, library, salon, chapel, theater, and some patio, so um, by pub, I don't mean there could be a bartender there, so don't think that, but, um, it's a great place for people to come and just gather with their families, um, you know, watch the game with the sun and play some games. Um, the second phase is the enhanced living town home, so this is the truly independent, uh, 55 plus, active living, there's a lot of different names for this, but it's a community. Um, they are welcome, they'll be welcome to come in and do the different activities, both in the senior housing with the existing, um, event center that's there. Um, and these will be fourplexes, I realize I didn't update my number here, but, um, we are now totaling about 68 of those townhomes, um, in this phase, so that is a great thing. Um, and again, we'll do, uh, they'll be in association, um, for this part of the development that will be partnered with the golf club. Um, like I said, the amenities that that has to offer. Uh, the third part is the event center expansion, about 6,700 square feet is planned, um, including a pool, um, couple golf simulators, uh, fitness center, a locker and shower room, um, so again, really, um, creating a great community there, with a lot of activities to offer. The third, the rest of that, we call it kind of that lower spine, we'll start building them from the bottom, um, of that with some residential homes, single family homes, and really we'll meet in the middle, um, we'll see what the, the market is calling for at that time. Any questions so far, should keep going. So really the, again, some of this is redundant here, but the project scope investment, so overall it's a 39 acre, um, development, like I said, seven, three phases. Um, total budget is about the 24 million, actually creeping up a little bit more. Um, we have something that's different with Equway is that, um, with a lot of developers, is that we are actually developers, or we're investors in the development, so we are part of it, uh, you know, you're getting a great project because we're, we're here to stay. Um, so again, phase one, I think you can kind of read through that, I just really broke down the building a little bit more. Um, about $18 million for that piece, um, some TID money, and then the PACE grant, which is important too, so that's, if you're not familiar with the PACE, I'm sure most of you are, but, um, that is the green tax, um, that's offered, so, um, it's a great opportunity for these new developments. Okay, so the second phase, um, the townhomes, um, so the fourplexes, like I said, we've up, that we've increased that to 68 townhomes. Um, each apartment will be two bedroom, two bath, with a basement and two car garage. Um, 1200 to 1400 square feet plus the garage for each of those units. Um, we'll be pre-selling those as we continue here, um, with a sale price of 250 to 280,000, so, and the investment fees for that, um, is upwards of 7 million. Um, the third phase is the event center, um, expansion, um, the remaining lots, like I said, will be developed, and we'll really work with the city, the golf course, really see, um, like I said, what the market's calling for, and what everybody would like to see for the rest of that. Um, the impact, um, for the city, so 35 to 45 new jobs created, um, just for the senior housing facility, um, so that, um, brings some good jobs, jobs to town, um, I broke that down more admin, administrative, clinical, a range there, so again, depending on how many are filled full-time or part-time, so there's a good, a good number of new jobs will be created. Um, the property tax revenue, um, on the townhomes, so at the 2000 to 3000 per unit, um, you're looking at the 136 to 204,000 a year. Um, obviously it's, we're creating a social and safe active community for our 55 plus community members. Um, visiting family members, right, we'll have lots of visitors coming to town, um, and, uh, you know, they'll bring that revenue to the different Jefferson businesses. The senior housing facility, 75 to 90,000 per year in taxes, um, and again, deciding what we end up doing with those remaining lots, another upwards of 100,000 on those taxes. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, the continuum of care, so really starting at that 55 plus, very active, very independent living, you know, all the way through the stages of life, it's just something that you don't see everywhere, so I think it's a great thing to offer in Jefferson. So the market research, this is just an overview, this is for the townhome piece of it, um, you know, we're working with local realtors, and, um, this is how we came up with the price range, so we're really fitting right in that, we're really filling the need for those townhomes. Um, you can read through this, I have a full feasibility study if you'd like to go through the, you know, 90 plus pages of that, but, um, in short, I just pulled out some highlights here, um, it shows the areas, Johnson Creek, Palenville, Jefferson, obviously, is what is included in that. Um, the bottom paragraph, if you go to that, will draw residents that are living, some residents are living outside of that area, um, about 30% is what, is what you think, you know, you can't always tell for sure, but lots of research goes into this. Um, so this is, uh, the next page here on the market research, so the townhomes, um, if you look over at the 2024, well, 2019, either one, um, but if you look at the 2024, there's a need of 185, so we're obviously underbuilding this piece of it, so we fully expect these to be filled, filled very quickly. Um, and then if you look down at the very bottom, so that 104, um, this is actually on, like, in that area, is 104, that's just the assisted living, so not taking into consideration the memory care or that independent plus, so again, we build to have a very successful project, looking at picking up just 30% of that, um, area, um, that was part of the study, um, and to have really full operating voice. Uh, just more information here on the market research that was done. Um, the three sub-levels of service, the projected is 161 units needed in this area by 2024, so again, building 77 units, we're, we're filling in nicely. This breaks down that market study just a little bit more, you can see the independent, the assisted living, um, just those two with the 77 unit building, so you know, the 63 independent and assisted living units that we have there, we're underbuilding for that. And again, I mentioned earlier, um, you're seeing a need for zero memory care units, uh, because there is obviously memory care here, but that continuum of life and offering that throughout, um, is important, so it's a fairly small memory care unit, um, but it's a great thing to offer. So here is the updated site concept, so this has changed since the last time we visited, um, you see over here then to the right, the layout of the building has changed a bit, there used to be a middle leg in there, um, you see parking that we've added, which is important for this project too, and then you see that they're now all the fourplexes down that ridge. What do you think? What do you think, Jim? Alright, the next one, uh, these next pages here, I think probably best to go through at your leisure, um, but it breaks it down by floor. Um, you'll see where the community spaces, um, you know, how the apartments are laying out, um, and then the very last one is again, the, um, the rendering of what the property will look like. So thank you again, we'll open it up to, for questions, yep.
The wages?
Yeah.
I have all that information, it's on there.
Okay.
The wages?
Yeah.
I have all that information, it's on there.
Okay.
But absolutely, yep. Yep, so we, um, different operations, management companies.
Numbers for that?
Do I have what?
Historical numbers for that, working on?
Like, are you looking for turnover?
Yeah, like, hey, have you developed these in the past, that, that successful staffing?
Mm-hmm, yeah, absolutely, so we're looking, and the places, that was an important, I mean, it's a great question, and it was important when we're vetting all of these different companies, is really what is their turnover rate, I mean, that is the biggest struggle in many companies, many, um, different businesses, but that is part of the vetting process. That answer your question?
Sure.
Anyone else have any questions on the call?
Hello?
I think there's a, one for, uh, who's did I cut, did someone?
Your next, Vinnie?
I'm at Vinnie.
That'd be, that'd be gross, uh, was the view of development looking from, I guess, east to west or west to east?
Um.
East to west, yep.
Okay, just trying to get an understanding of how they laid out on the property, so.
Yep, so I guess I failed in here, so where we're building this is actually on John Green's property, which we have secured separately, so we'll be purchasing that land, so if that helps, kind of give you more of that visual.
Jim?
Yep, I may actually have a couple of questions, one probably is for the.
The view you just popped up, that is looking from west to east, but.
No, that's looking from across.
I realized I was up on his camera the whole time.
That number nine hole or number four hole up there, that seems to be a big.
We're barely touching it.
T-box.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, so you'll know that, you'll note that, uh, that we've talked about 68 units all the way to total.
Yeah.
Currently our site plan, it goes technically 70, and that's with this long loop right there on the inside corner, right, right here. Can we add any, that duplex may or may not happen, because we really need to work through the details and do it in the T-box?
Yep.
And that's why we haven't included it until we're gonna come, because it may or may not survive the, the final design.
Okay.
But yes, with that, with that duplex being, they'll, they'll want to be able to move the T-box.
No, how many feet of bulk, yards or whatever you want to call it, for the T-box and deep ballpark?
Don't know yet, yeah, we have, we have got to.
Minimal. Forget, let's drop this middle one, yeah. And that's why, if you remember the last, um, the last site concept, so can you hold it up and touch it?
Yes.
If you remember, there was another bike coming out right here, and that's what we changed after meeting with the golf board and everything, so we took that off, um, which allows, I mean, that's.
So basically all the green states were. Yep.
Yep. You don't have to disturb any of it that much.
Green, green is a new term.
Thank you. Yeah.
Do you have any questions on the call?
Tim, is you have questions?
Yeah, this is a bubble, um, actually, I don't know the answer to this question, but I think in Wisconsin, a fourplex building would be treated as a commercial build, be subject to commercial codes.
Just go through state approval.
And as opposed to, I think a duplex is residential.
That's right.
So that typically, I suspect, adds a lot of cost to a project, but, I, I don't know, do you have to sprinkle those buildings?
You do not.
You do not.
You don't have to sprinkle, and what it does is, is assuming that, that the four, the fourplex that we're designing doesn't change in design, you know, it typically doesn't decide to do seven different versions, it's one state approval for all of the buildings, and you show the site plan, showing each one of those buildings to be located, it'll only be another state approval process if they change the design in any way, any significant way. So it's, it doesn't really add a lot of cost because we're under the threshold of huge coverage for sprinkling system.
And then, I think Nicole, maybe a question for you, so I know that this property is, uh, the big building is, is built on a piece of property that is currently owned by, uh, not Jim or not the golf course, John Green, and you talked about having that, uh, control, uh, under contract, I suppose, that means. So is there any encroachment from this development on existing golf course property, or is it all, all now designed, so, I mean, some of the earlier site plans, I think.
It did encroach a little bit more, but.
And this one does not?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, I think my last question would be, I'm guessing that most of the residents in the assisted living part of this would all be private pay, is that?
Um, starting out typically, yep, and there's a lot of different ways of doing it, and that's what I, I worked with the operator through that piece. Um, but this one, there is room for, um, some assistance, state assistance, um, but typically, you open a building, it's private pay, and after two years or so, two, maybe three years, you, you don't want to make anybody move, right, and so if that time comes and the money is gone, we are, we're able to keep them in our homes.
I know one question, assuming this goes forward, that you can anticipate probably from our emergency services people, is that, and we have a fair amount of this in the community now, um, is that someone calls for a paramedic or an ambulance, and it's a Medicare reimbursement, that reimbursement is a state, we're in 270, or $278. I can tell you generally, these folks will tell you, you can't take the, an ambulance with a full crew out of the firehouse for, for that amount of money, and so, you know, that's probably a blanket and sour word, I think they'll get asked from, from, from those folks, so that's why I sort of was interested in the mix of private versus.
And that whole piece, um, that is taken into consideration as you work through the performance, through the upcoming budgets, everything, so don't see it in the two-year pieces that I've shared with you, but you start seeing stuff.
What would be the plan, restaurant and like little golf course shack with that, and like little?
That we are, we're with the golf club, um, having them in the clubhouse, um, having neighbors, you know, open, will it be? That building is there and is there to stay, open to the public. Is somebody trying to ask a question, or is it background?
Yeah, I would. This is Alderman Miller. I would just like to add that, uh, I don't know that it matters where the, it was coming from, just, uh, some, that it's.
Can you try to repeat that, we couldn't, we couldn't hear you.
Yeah, my, my question is. Is that it doesn't really matter where you're calling from, if you're an older person and needing air, you're gonna, gonna call the, wherever you are.
What was that, part of that? Oh. So we think, no matter where you are, we're gonna call the ambulance.
Ron, can you please, question?
My, it wasn't a question, it was a statement, is that if you're an older person, no matter where you are, you're gonna call the ambulance. It doesn't matter if you're in one, in one place or spread across the countryside, you're still gonna call the ambulance.
Great point, thank you.
Put your mask up, Bill.
Was there any other?
Busted.
I have a question, so you said you projected out to 2024, and you, your study shows there is a need for this type of housing here.
Mm-hmm.
But did you, how far out did you project, and, and the reason I ask is, the baby. But did you, how far out did you project? And, and the reason I ask is, the baby boom generation is currently, has been for a long time, the largest segment of our society, but sadly, in twenty years or so, there aren't going to be many baby boomers left. And the generations that follow that have a lot fewer people. So like you said, twenty-four, there's a need. What about thirty-four and forty?
So we didn't do a feasibility study out that far on this one, but in general, the need and speak, help speak to this a bit, the need, um, will continue to be there, right? There may be less people, we're not getting younger, but you still have people aging there as the younger folks continue to add, which is why actually that independent, starting there, and, and having the, the different phases offered is important. So it's just a difference. Um, that's where the mix becomes a little bit different, you know? You have more assisted living, um, than the truly independent, you know, as you're aging in place.
And just to follow, uh, Nicole, we, we attend, uh, a lot of the, did attend, a lot of the national aging conferences. And sometimes we speak, sometimes we simply just attend to have a booth. And that question comes up a lot, and it's a great question. But one of the things that many of the experts in the industry nationally have also noted is everybody's looking longer. So some of those age groups, those that are coming up behind the boomers, they're not living until eighty-seven-two or seventy-eight. They're living to eighty-six to ninety-two. And so that, that, that need is still, still being born. They still, they, they actually predict a very high requirement when they're going to the next, you know, seven, eight years.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments for, uh, Nicole or anyone from EQUA?
I have one more. If you guys are taking over neighbors by the grill, or what's the chances you guys relinquish your liquor license and CKA bank license
Not per the plan, you know? But do you want to run it? Gotcha. I, I mean, I will tell you, you know, neighbors, we don't have any plans for changes right now, but we are, all those ideas coming to the table, um, are good. So certainly open to the session.
One would think that it would seriously diminish the value of the property if it didn't have electric license. Okay. Sure. Well, we can talk about that with Attorney Rogers afterwards if you wish. I think we're looking at the, looking for feedback from the city council on the concept here tonight. And, uh, those would be maybe some of the details that, if this goes forward, would be addressed. Is there any other feedback from city council members that are in attendance with us tonight? We're gonna go around one more time on the virtual meeting. Hold me.
I'm good. I just had the questions about the golf course and neighbors.
Okay. You?
Capone?
Bill?
I'm good.
Are we supportive of it? Al?
Yeah, I'm on board with it. As long as, have the issues with the TIP and the TIP district, then
We're working on that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll go back a little bit.
All right, that's, that would be one of my two.
The TIP different, TIP district is, is a concern because they're turning into a pretzel to get it, uh, straightened out. And, uh, to make sure that, um, the issues with the golf course are a result to both people's, uh, both entities' satisfaction.
All right, nice.
Bye.
Okay. Ron Miller, any other comments or questions?
Uh, I need them. She's gotta do that.
No? Yes. This is going along. All right.
Well, great. Thank you very much, everyone.
Uh, we're gonna kind of morph into phase two of this, and Tim, you wanna just address, and if you would, please, come onto the podium so that the people pulling in from home can see, and hear you a little bit better. We appreciate that.
So the, the development that really is proposed here tonight, um, all takes place within the existing boundaries of, of, of the city's tax increment district number seven. That's a mixed-use tax increment district. Statutorily, that district can have no more than thirty-five percent of the land area devoted for a residential use. So we believe, based upon, uh, feedback from the Department of Revenue, that the large assisted living building would be considered residential and not a commercial property. That's kind of a departure of historically how these things have been treated. Uh, the problem that has to be overcome is that should the development occur, it would exceed thirty-five percent of the existing land area of the district for residential purposes. And I would generally say, you know, the city really couldn't move this development along with, statutorily not keeping in compliance with the district, potentially threatening the whole, you know, legal standing of this, of the tax increment district. So, um, I would say the alternative seems pretty clear. For this development to proceed, the boundaries of the district would have to be amended as they currently stand to basically take into more property. So that if the development occurs, it wouldn't exceed that thirty-five percent of the land area standard. So I would say there's, you know, not necessarily great opportunity to do that, but there are two ways to do it that I can think of. I think the best alternative would be to work with the golf course foundation, take in a piece of the golf course property, and that is something that the developer and golf course foundation board would have to work through. Um, Bill Pino actually has, um, um, created one possible parcel of property that could be added to the tax increment district. You know, that would put, under this scenario, that would really create enough new property in the district with an amended boundary that this development wouldn't exceed, would not exceed that thirty-five percent of land area rule. Um, I think that's the best alternative. It's, it's not the only alternative, there are others, but I won't get into it. I don't think they're, uh, as strong as argument as, as this, uh, potential case would be. Um, generally, what I would say is, the golf course foundation, uh, would have to be on board. They would have to no doubt use a certified survey map to create a new parcel, looking maybe something like that. There's probably a bunch of ways you could do it, that's just the one alternative. Creating a new parcel, running that through the city process, that really means getting the plan commission to approve a new land division plan, then recording it with a register of deeds, and that would create a new parcel. So one of the things, if the city did amend the boundary, you can only add full and complete parcels to the district. Right now, that property and within the blue boundary, that's all part of a much larger, uh, parcel number. So, um, I would say the golf course, um, foundation board would certainly have to be, uh, uh, um, on board with this idea. They would have to be the applicant, do that, hire a surveyor, develop that CSM, come before the plan commission, get that CSM approved, and then report it across the street. And then I think the city would be in a position to proceed with the process of trying to amend the boundary. We've already made one boundary adjustment. We have additional opportunities to amend the boundary, so the city could do it. It's just that you have to do it under the right circumstances, and it would really take the golf course foundation board to be, to be on board. Um, so that's something I think really that would, you know, would be, have to be discussed between, uh, the developers, uh, the golf course foundation, um, and of course, the, the city. Um, but, you know, that's really step one before you can really do too much work. You have to create that parcel. And then the city can consider adding it to a boundary amendment, and that's a statutory process, probably capable of about two months.
Tim, maybe you can explain what the impact would be to the golf course foundation?
Right. Um, I don't think there's very little impact that I can think of. Um, one thing that, um, I would say is that the golf course foundation is a, is a nonprofit. So there's no property taxes that are currently generated on this property. They don't, they don't pay them because of that nonprofit status. So, but it is a commercial use, it's a non-residential use, that helps get around that, or comply with that thirty-five percent rule. So I think it's probably the best alternative in that there wouldn't be substantial impacts to the other overlapping taxing jurisdictions, county, school district, and vocational district, because there's no taxes paid right now. There would be no forfeiture of future taxes, uh, if this is added to the existing TIP number seven boundary. So that's why, you know, I think it's probably the best opportunity. But I can't think of any impacts to, uh, the golf course, short of, you know, someone's got to spend some money on a surveyor, create that CSM and run it through the process.
So not a lot of negative impact for the golf foundation, but the upside would be potentially that there's gonna be this housing adjacent to the course, and undoubtedly, some of the people that would choose to live there would be members of the course and be supporters of Jefferson Golf, right? That, that, I mean, is that kind of the light of thinking here?
I would think this could be mutually beneficial.
That's
Absolutely. And when I mentioned that we, the Golf Association, that would be part of that, is, um, we'd rather be full partners with the golf, um, course and, uh, for that. So we would be more involved with our own properties.
Good. I think that's important to bring that out, just so everybody understands what's, what's in it for everybody involved here. It's gotta be a win-win for everyone involved.
I would say, uh, Dave Ferris, uh, who's with Ellers, is with us on the screen, Dawn from Bay here tonight. But, uh, Dave, was that a adequate explanation?
No, all the notes I had written down is exactly what you said, so I, I'm in agreement with what you, uh, presented. You know, the golf course, uh, being, you know, the, the easier way as far as the politics of, if you brought in some kind of a existing residential that may have caused some issues politically with the other taxing districts. So this seems to be probably a more, uh, clean way to go without really impacting any, any taxpayers.
My only question, Dave, it's not unusual to bring in a non-taxable entity into a TIP district?
No, I've seen it at other places where there's actually municipal land that's part of the TIP district as well. Um, there are, there is plenty of TIP districts that actually have municipal facilities within them, and actually so.
That was my only concern.
Good question. Any other questions or comments for Dave?
I think the one thing that Tim hit on that's important, uh, as far as before you ever, uh, head down the road of amending though, is that certified survey map, you need to have that approved and recorded before you want to start going down the road because you can't create an amendment unless you have whole parcels, and, and Tim mentioned that as well. So we'd have to have that cer- certified survey map process done so that those whole, those, that prop, that parcel you bring in is a whole parcel.
Thank you. Thanks, David. Thanks for joining us tonight.
I'm here. Thank you.
The developers, are the developers, agreement with the golf course, they would pay for the
I think they have to work that arrangement. It would be the city. The city's the group that would divide that. So I think that would be for some agreement between the developer and, uh, in the, in the foundation.
Anyone else?
Well, Tim, we would, uh, the city would incur costs, uh, in amending the TIP boundary agreement.
Yeah, no question. If, uh, the city amends the boundaries of the district, that, that's like creating a new district going through that statutory process of wanting to save. So, you know, I would say the cost of doing that is fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
What exactly is the advantage of this being a TIP district? In other words, what is the developer getting? And would this project go forward if it was not a district of any kind? If they just said, we want to acquire this land, build this project? Or is that a non-starter? I don't know.
Well, I can address part of that, Al. I would say the land is currently in a tax increment district.
Right.
There is still anticipated that the city would undertake additional improvements within that district. For instance, it's been a long-term plan that Gulf Drive would be extended to the end of the existing tax increment district boundary, extend itself. That's expensive to do. That is, I'm sure, over a million dollars to extend that road along with utilities. And so the district needs taxable improvements. The city's gonna borrow money to do that. It needs taxable improvements to be able to retire that debt. So that's why this development probably generates lots of new taxes, would be beneficial to the city to complete the TIP project plan.
Okay. So it's an advantage to this. I, I understand.
I, I think that would be, that's a true statement.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anyone else? If God Thank you, Nicole and Michelle and everyone, uh, from EQUA for, for coming tonight and presenting this to us. Um, next course of action, Tim, would be, if, uh, this was to, to move forward, would be, uh, EQUA Development and Jefferson Golf Foundation working out some agreement on that, does he need that, that parcel, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's certainly discussions the city and the developer has to have, but that is one of the first things that really truly needs to happen. We need to create that parcel. And if that's just not possible, that's not the only means to amend the boundary, but I think it's the best one, and it's the alternative that is worth trying to figure out. Because remember, you know, you want to be fair for the other taxing jurisdictions, and you have a county consideration, a school district, and a vocational district consideration, so.
Okay. Yeah. Jim?
But Al had a good question here. That TIP district, Al, I got it from a pretty long one, since I'm not gonna mention the name. That TIP district is the most profitable TIP district in Jefferson County right now. So there's a surplus of money. So, there's a surplus of money in there to pay for the surveying, but we work out something. Can we do that, Tim? It's in, there's a, guess what? Can we work it out? They did think that the surveying money out of the TID district itself?
I would say no, Jim, because if the city, the plan commission, it can't be its own applicant. It's got to approve that certified survey through that statutory process, and the city can't really pay for it. It can't be its own applicant. So, I would say that kind of is the cheap part of this. You know, the more expensive part is to, I just asked my question.
Yeah, I would say no. I would answer your question. Sorry, I was too long. I would say no.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much, and we will revisit this again in the near future. Next, we'll move on if we may. Ordinance number four dash twenty revised, ordinance revising subsection two eighty-six dash one E two of the Jefferson Municipal Code to incorporate a letter of map revision, amending panel number five five zero five five C zero one nine three F of the adopted floodplain maps of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin. All the ones, please.
Honorable mayor, citizens of Jefferson, city council members, City of Jefferson ordinance four dash twenty revised, ordinance revising state statutes two eighty-six dash one E two of the Jefferson Municipal Code to incorporate a letter of map revision, amending panel number five five zero five five C zero one nine three F of the adopted floodplains maps, City of Jefferson, Wisconsin. In due reading, the whole ordinance and the whole copy is on file at the city clerk's office and is available for public inspection. This is the first reading, but I moved to suspend the second reading. Next, second.
It's been moved consecutive to suspend the second reading. Any discussion on suspending it? Hearing none. All in favor of suspending the second reading? Please signify by saying aye as sir calls your name.
Alderman, fire.
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Bramble?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Kraus? Hully?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to approval of the ordinance as provided. Hearing this, I can explain this, please do.
So, previously, the city adopted this ordinance referring to is the modification of floodplain ordinance for the left, corrupted, the old foremost building in the current, where it says. Modify. What we're doing is modify, we modified the existing floodplain ordinance to adopt the maps which recognize the new floodplain based on the levy. After that was adopted, we found some errors in some of the text, essentially the floodplain map. So, this is simply a clerical issue. We went through this with DNR to go through the correct process. Essentially, what we're doing is re-adopting, or adopting the ordinance modifications to the floodplain maps to correct those errors in the original.
Chris, would you add anything to that?
I would add nothing.
Good explanation, Reader's Digest version. Any questions on the explanation of what we're doing here tonight? Seeing none. All in favor of approval of this?
She moved, she moved on. I moved to suspend the second.
But then we need a motion to adopt the...
I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number four dash twenty revised.
Second.
Niles and Bramble?
He lifted.
Yep.
Bramble?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Unanimous by my call. Resolution, thank you. Resolution number twenty-nine, the consent agenda, all the women.
Honorable mayor, council members and citizens, City of Jefferson, resolution number twenty-nine. Be it resolved by the common council, the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for September fifteenth to twenty twenty is hereby adopted. All tiers payable for August twenty twenty in the amounts of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, seventy-nine dollars, and payroll summary for September eleventh, two thousand twenty in the amounts of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Council minutes from September first, twenty twenty for the common council. Licenses as approved by the regular authority committee. We had operators license for Lynette Hartel for Rock Bottom, Jacob Nelson for Jefferson Golf Club, Lauren Vergens for Herbies, and Paige Powell for Quick Trip. I would so move.
The move is your second. Second, second, by Alderman Young. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda? Please signify by saying aye as your name is called. No, if you oppose.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Aye.
Bramble?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Hully?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Resolution number thirty, it's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number thirty, a resolution to accept the final audit and distribution of excess increment to override tax incremental district number four. All the votes, please.
Thank you, mayor, City of Jefferson, resolution number thirty. Whereas the city created tax incremental district number four on April eighteenth, two thousand, whereas on the third, twenty twenty, the council terminated the district. Be it further resolved that the common council hereby accepts the final audit for tax incremental district number four. Be it further resolved that the city treasurer shall distribute any excess increment collected after providing for ongoing expenses of the TID to the affected taxing districts with proportionate shares to be determined in the final audit by the city's auditors. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bramble. And, Tim, would you like to give us a brief discussion or recap of this? Another one of our successful tip districts.
So, for the people who don't remember, this tax increment district is really a single purpose, single project tax increment district. It's the old high school apartments. If you go back that far, when that problem happened, a tax increment district starts three years ago. It's fair to say that the city has taken the step last spring to abolish the district a little early than statutorily we would have to. The next step in the process is to have an audit. That has been completed. Bill, you just need to scroll a little bit more, right there. So, that audit has been completed, and with the exception of a little paperwork with the Department of Revenue, the district will be abolished. This property will go back on the normal tax rules a little earlier than anticipated. The city's liabilities for the district has been met. A certain amount plus increment, approximately ninety thousand dollars that we have. And the last steps is, after tonight, we will, we will apportion. We will, that's good enough, Bill. We will apportion the surplus increment that we hold, ninety-six thousand dollars, to the other taxing jurisdictions, including the city, in the manner that is outlined in note five of the auditor's report. So, if accepted tonight, that's the next step, a little paperwork. Everything's done, and the property, the next tax year will be returned to the normal property tax rules. That's a good thing. You want to do that as soon as you can.
That is a good thing. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. No questions or comments? Not. All in favor of approval of resolution number thirty to accept the final audit and distribution of excess increment to override taxing incremental districts, for taxing incremental district number four? Please signify by saying aye as your name is called. No, if you oppose.
Mr. Bramble?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Resolution number thirty-one, a resolution requesting exemption from the county library tax. Alderman Young, please.
Right. Mr. Mayor, council, citizens of Jefferson, City of Jefferson, decision number thirty-one, resolution requesting exemption from the county library tax. Whereas the Jefferson County Board established a county library service and levies, a county library tax is authorized under section four three point five seven, paragraph three of the Wisconsin statute. And whereas section four three point six four, paragraph two B of this Wisconsin statute provides that a village or city is exempt from the county tax if it levies a tax for public library service, appropriates and expends for library, a library fund as defined by section four three point five two, paragraph one, during the year for which the county tax levy is made, some of, a sum at least equal to the county library tax rate in the prior year multiplied by the equalized valuation of the property in the city or village for the current year. And whereas the City of Jefferson will in twenty twenty-one appropriate and expend an amount in excess of that calculated above, the City of Jefferson hereby request the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors that the City of Jefferson be exempt from the payment of any tax for the support of the county library service as provided in section four three point six four, paragraph two. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded by the city clerk to the following parties, administrator, Jefferson County Library Council, one oh nine Merchants Avenue, Fort Atkins, Wisconsin, five three five three eight, and to the county clerk at three twenty South Main Street, room one oh nine, Jefferson, Wisconsin, five three five four nine. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fire. Discussion? Basically, because the simple answer to this is because we provide a city library, they're exempt from the... Because we levy and afford library services and provide those, the City of Jefferson is exempt. Any questions? Okay. If not, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called. No, if you oppose.
Alderman Young?
Aye.
Kraus? Hully?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Miller?
Aye.
Bramble?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear it from Alderman Miller? Make the motion to adjourn. We are deleting the higher of the part-time crossing guard that person has removed their name from consideration. Sorry to explain that. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I tell move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second by Miller. All in favor on a voice vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night. Drive carefully.